Okay, it is six thirty. We're gonna call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will begin with the invocation. We have Mr. Pinkston here with us today, this evening.
Well, counsel and all, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you as we celebrate the birth of Jesus and the gift you were in that manger. Just make us mindful of the gifts like living in this city that we experience on a daily basis. Guide the heart, minds, and the of each of these wonderful council members. And just give them a mind for the work and the important decisions they'll be making tonight. Protect the amazing good and the goodwill that is rising in our community and the spirit that is working to bring us together. And here at the end of the year, God, we just look back at the work, the sacrifice, the endless service of the city staff, our amazing police and fire department teams and and the volunteers and of course this council. So we look forward to 2024 and ask for your blessing to reside on this city and on these who lead us, who take care of us and bring just and good to us. So again, bless this meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Lottoe, will you lead us? Thank you, chief. Okay, first up, we have acknowledgements and presentations. We're gonna be recognizing one of our firefighters tonight, chief. Is that right?
Mayor, council, city staff and residents, thank you for your time this evening in allowing me to recognize firefighter Drew Garcia, who has reached his one-year anniversary with the department. Firefighter Drew Garcia began his career with the Almaz Park Fire Department. After spending five years with the Almaz Park Fire Department, we were fortunate enough to have him join our department. Firefighter Garcia brought with him experience, knowledge of a work as a working firefighter, a great work ethic and a desire for advanced training. He has fit in well with his fellow firefighters on B shift, and we look forward to his continued career with the Castle Hills Fire Department. Firefighter Garcia, can you come forward, please?
I do solemnly swear, I do solemn swear, that I will obey the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will obey the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Texas.
And the Constitution of the State of Texas.
I will hold devotion to the duty above personal risk.
I will hold devotion to duty above personal risk.
I will strive to protect the lives, homes and property.
I will strive to protect the lives, homes and property.
Of the citizens and visitors of Castle Hills.
Of the citizens and visitors of Castle Hills.
From the havoc of fire and other disasters.
From the havoc of fire and other disasters.
Thank you, chief and firefighter Garcia for your service to the city of Castle Hills. We appreciate you. And next up, we have citizens to be heard. First up, we have Raymond Castaneda.
Evening, council, city staff and residents. President of the Castle Hills Police Association, I just wanted to bring some few bullet points to y'all's attention that I promised y'all from the beginning of our existence here and me being appointed to president. First, certificates that we're presenting, we presented one to the city of Castle Hills. It's a certificate of appreciation, y'all's assistance and support for the association since our existence. Anything from finance, Nora from doing our payroll deductions, city council for hearing us and providing us with that leadership type of training and guidance and insight. Another person that we want to recognize, certificate of recognition is gonna be for Chief of Police Esteban Zuniga. I believe this past couple of years, it's been really tough on our department. And when Chief Zuniga took on that role, he really did took on a lot of responsibilities. It's probably been one of the most toughest years that our department has seen in several years to include the loss of one of our own and reaching minimum staff and having to cover some shifts, especially night shift on his own. And I don't believe he gets enough recognition for his actions and maintaining the department and improving it. He laid a foundation that I believe is an aspiring future for our department. Another person I want to recognize is Joey from TMPA. He is gonna be our official representative of the department. Most would ask, what does that mean right now? The TMPA is pretty much gonna provide us with guidance on how to be basically better and improve our association, our efforts to the community, giving us guidance and insight on how an association should and run successfully. We have our POA trailer that I brought a few months back to y'all's attention. It's gonna be utilized as a mobile command center. If you were to ask, what is the purpose of that? Basically, it's a little centralized little police trailer that has amenities such as security cameras, one or two personnel providing some type of police presence. Basically, it's to help the PD. PD does get a lot of officers and stuff like that. Whenever the city has a big event, this is completely voluntary. This is on the association, such as Castle Hills Fiesta, as y'all have noticed that it does increase with the crowd. You know, kids could get lost. It would be something more that the people kind of have there for police presence. They could make contact with police officers and whatnot, and we just have a generalized overview of surveillance of the area. Community outreach, trying to engage the community as much as we can. We did reach out to a few public schools. We had some equipment donated to us such as stop signs, traffic vests, whistles, and so like that. We're gonna provide that to their safety patrols. I'm not sure if y'all know what that is, but at these elementary schools, they have kids that provide that type of traffic enforcement for the school before and after their their hours of work. So we offer them to provide some type of training and this equipment to them that was donated to us. We reached out to one so far. We're waiting the response on two others. We also are gonna be hosting our first ever Christmas toy drive. It's gonna be at the Moxie Apartment located at a Jackson Keller, Fortune 03 Jackson Keller. It's gonna be on December 21st at 3:00 PM. And basically, what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna show up and be donating gifts to about thirty or fifty children. This is completely on the association. We are asking for donations for the community if they would like to. But most of all, it's gonna be us providing all these toys to the kids. This was something that came up and was kind of got it to us from TMPA. Pretty much on reaching the community and trying to develop at least a minimum of five events per year. This is just an update, and I hope next council meeting, I wish to bring y'all some more updates, positive. And hopefully, we can have some more community outreach programs. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Corporal Castaneda, and thank you to Mrs. Supulva for being here with us as well. Okay, next up, we have the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, yes, sir.
I move that we adopt the consented agenda.
Perfect. Thank you. Do we have a second? Second, my Ms. Daines, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Okay, first out of a new business. I think we're gonna table six point one. Is that correct, Mr. Rappley?
Yes, mayor. We, I've talked to our auditor, Mr. Martinez, and they're still working through some staffing issues. Apparently, they're close on finalizing this, but needed some extra time. They had sort of requested a special meeting this month, and I told them it can wait till January that I wasn't gonna do a special meeting for y'all this month. But I have a meeting with them, try to finalize everything with Ms. Davis, so it'll be on the January agenda. Again, purely just staffing complications for them that's kind of held this up the last couple of months.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rappley. Item six point two, discussion and possible action on orders number 2023-12-12 approving a budget amendment for FY 2023, Mr. Rappley.
Mayor, can you open the, I think it's ready to go there on the. Thank you, mayor. Appreciate it. Mayor, council, this is our budget amendment for FY 23. This is what we pretty much do every December as far as go from adopted and what sort of line items need to be amended. Real quick. Mayor, if you could, thank you. What I'll do is give an overview of budget amendment and the ideas that's either close to or at the 31st for expenditures through the year, cover some department expenditures across the board, some one-time costs for FY 23 that discusses products versus services. Again, the department expenditures for are from adopted to amended and then highlight those certain line items and then overall impact of the budget amendment. There we go. Let's work in there. The intent of the budget amendment is to provide funds in the general fund to cover unexpected expenses in an effort for transparency, accounting, accounting and communication. The proposit makes council aware of revenue and expenses differences from the original adopted to comply with the budget policy. Just the highlights and challenges, you know, we faced filling regular budgeted position sanitation, increased costs a couple of years, last couple of years in operations. In that area, mainly IT services, building, equipment, maintenance services, overtime, police and fire and fuel in some areas from that standpoint. And then as it relates to hiring public works, as I mentioned, they've had several positions open, including a sanitation driver. But as a result, we've had to use the contract employees to assist with operations and public works. Again, you all approved adopted budget that changed the hourly wage to be increased, January 1st. We're working to recruit a few employees according to Mr. Harada. So this may probably impact a severe decrease in that contract line item next year. Fortunately, the revenue, like I mentioned, the revenue of general fund is strong. We've been seeing an increase in some revenue streams. Obviously, sales taxes is up this time last year. Interest is is very, you know, we targeted about thirty thousand, the budget, and we're about two hundred and fifty thousand for revenue this year over. We've had other revenue close to the original budget. But what we're projecting right now, when we look at overall, we're about five hundred thousand over higher than the proposed increase of expenditures of the three forty seven outlined within the totals of each departments. And then, of course, we won't know what the surplus, if any, looks like until the audit's done for FY 23. There we go. Obviously, when I talk about realistic projections, expenditures and revenues through December 31st, 2023, the idea is we're closer to what's been projected. I highlighted some areas of interest. I put it on the dais there. That's a printout as of today through expenditures. But obviously, the bottom line will still grow slightly. And again, when you talk about revenue, ad valorem, interest, court, sales tax projections, you know, we're two months behind on collecting the sales tax to get a realistic number. The ad valorem is a few months behind, and that's not even calculated or reconciled until the audit's done. And then projections of about eight point two million over, which gives us that almost half a million over what we're projecting in revenue. But again, we're focusing on the bottom line right now for the department's expenditures and then specific line items in the departments. And then when I, when I talk about specific line items, again, I'm covering so mainly IT, building, maintenance, increased operational line items. Overall impact of the budget amendment adopted versus amended is where we'll land as of amending this budget through the December 31st. And then again, when you look at salary line items across the board in the departments, for the most part, they're at budget or actually below. You know, police was below, sanitation was below. It's just the operational line item expenses that we're focusing on because the salary line items have been at or below what we budgeted from that standpoint. Thank you, mayor. As far as the FY 23 amended budget line items, right there, we have administration eighty-five thousand, police seventy-seven, fire forty, sanitation eighty-nine, streets fifty-nine, municipal court four, and then capital outlay minus ten thousand zero sixty-five totaling the three forty-seven, as I mentioned in the previous slide, over. Three highlighted operational line items across the board, as I've put here in most of the departments, if not a couple of departments. The IT services, we budgeted sixty-seven thousand seven fifty. You know, that's for IT assistance in the department. Specifically, for every department, that totals the sum of sixty-seven thousand. We're amending it to one hundred and twenty-three thousand, so fifty-six thousand over thirty dollars. So I'll get into the those costs. Overtime police adopted was eighty-five thousand total between the departments, and it and it found itself at one seventy-two, seven forty-one, and again, eighty-seven thousand seven forty-one over that. A lot is attributed, and Chief Zuniga can speak to that, as we had less officers. We didn't have a full house. We obviously were trying to recruit, and so that utilized more overtime. In fire, it was, we did have a period of time where we were looking for additional firefighters and then COVID-related where others had to take on shifts. Maintenance repair vehicles and public works and adopted fire, the totals in both those departments were fifty-one thousand. It ended up on one thousand and one and ninety. That is actually the culmination, and you know, I won't get into the particular details, but that has to do with our trash trucks being down, repairs, maintenance. At one point, when our, in our fire department, the engine was down, rescue was down, platform was down. So if it needed parts, supplies, that came at a higher cost. And of course, again, the general cost of business in some of those areas has risen over the last couple of years for those services. So that's the culmination of those two. Again, I speak to operational line items that were sort of unaccounted for when you start talking about maintenance and repairs to equipment. And then again, overtime is something that's needed, but had to be adjusted as a result of having less officers at the time. Budget amendment here, I'm gonna focus on administration, IT services, as I mentioned, just particularly for IT services. We budgeted twenty thousand, and the final count was fifty-one thousand nine thirteen. Attorneys line item seventy thousand, the finals eighty-one thousand five seventy. That's not all, Mr. Schnall. So that's Ryan Henry had provided us outside service as well, some things that Mr. Schnall. Conflict of interest. I was about to say he couldn't assist us, but I know you can cover the board. But it's conflict of interest. But he also, Mr. Henry's office did help Chief Zuniga with a few things that were costs from a legal standpoint. So that's sort of why that line item is over. And then mayor council expenses, we budgeted forty-five hundred, and we were at ten thousand. You know, that had to do with just travel and training from that standpoint. And then building maintenance supplies, we put in seven thousand, but it ended up at twenty-two thousand. And again, I talk about a one-time cost this year because majority of those funds were spent for the improvements that were done in the break room by Mr. Harada. And then overall, some HVAC repairs that happened here in the building as well. So that's, and I talk about one time, those sort of those one times in the budget that, you know, we see as a growth of the line item, and it's not been consistent in years. Street sanitation, again, five thousand. You know, Rick has had to have him and Justin use, excuse me, Justin use some overtime with some of the events and some other things. Comments, two thousand, the finals twelve thousand five eighty-two. I'm assuming that's for seasonal and holiday things as well and other improvements to the comments.
Mr. Rappley, what's the increase in the mayor and council? Is that TML?
Mainly TML, probably. There was some other travel trips. You know, there was a couple new new elected. Then there was other, an event that Mr. Joyce went to for EDC. So, you know, I think that's the culmination, probably, being the TML was in Dallas. And that, you know, I would say what, two or three council members went, including you. So that's, that's that cost. If you want an exact breakdown, I can have Nora send it to you as well.
I suspected it.
But you, you know, you have to look at it because last year you, you all were under in that light, I believe, because TML was in San Antonio. So somewhat balances out, I guess, if it's a rationale. And then street maintenance, minor, forty-five thousand to sixty-one thousand. That's over just in a sense that we had a lot more on-demand, sort of milling over, street work leading up to some of the micro-surfacing. And then Mr. Harada has done a lot of alley approaches with those dollars and some other work done in that, that, that line item. Correct, Mr. Harada? And then we have contract labor. So when we look at a sort of seventy thousand, that's where we highlight that the cost of the contract labor is offset by what we have budgeted for salaries and benefits. So that's sort of the net cost outside of what the combination of salary and benefits cost us within the sanitation department for that service. Correct? Anything else I wanted to talk about? Let's see. I think that covers it for this slide. IT services, okay. So when we talk about one-time costs, you know, as we, as you all know, council, I mean, we've had to fight an uphill battle with our aging IT system. So when they came in and they replaced all the servers, and I have that listed there for the server cost was at sixty-seven K. Once they got in there to do that, there was additional service costs related to other projects, other things that they ran into when they were doing not only the server project, but some other projects that were sort of one-time hardware projects from that standpoint. But when you look at what we budgeted, the fifty-six thousand over, we targeted the roadmap, and we made a lot of progress. You heard from, from Bridgehead at the October meeting how much we have done to address that roadmap. But we're not done, and we've been able to use the ARPA money for outside hardware. But some of the service hours related to projects and just assistance helping employees through IT has come out of the general fund itself. And then products versus services, that's what I mean as far as what's been impacting that. There's been a higher cost related to products impacting the general fund line item for IT versus what actually are the services we budget for assistance with your day-to-day monthly IT services. One of the things here, actual one-time costs, again, one hundred and fifteen thousand was the total for, you know, the hardware setup, time, all of those things relevant to replacing our aging servers. This was, this was done out of ARPA, the sixty-seven thousand. However, additional projects cost was billed to general fund forty-seven for and for service and about eighty-two hundred in billable service hours for it. We also, again, have a brand-new phone system. Some of the costs in coming in to assist setup and troubleshooting and those kind of things came out of that line item as well. Again, one-time cost because we're essentially revamping our phone system. And then a portion of cost IT service and general fund has been utilized for these one-time projects such as hardware laptop replacement. Again, we went through and replaced everyone's desktop with laptops. There was cost of service with that that affected this line item, which again, those are the things that won't be there next year. And then we basically improved the email exchange. We went virtual. So we one-eighty'd the email exchange from that standpoint and then phone system. So all these improvements have had extra costs related to project and services and not necessarily what the line item was intended for. Now, we, as you know, the IT roadmap that was updated, we did have some other things. I think I brought to y'all attention some other things that we have to improve upon. Mr. Zamiron provided this to me, but we're gonna have to do updates to some other areas. There's gonna be some costs related to that, and I'll get that to council. That might impact the line item again this year because some of it, I was targeting ARPA or CED as the one time to get the rest of the hardware equipment to finish out this roadmap to basically get us up to where we need to be as an organization in our IT infrastructure and environment. So I will send that to council. So I want to thank Louis. Louis overseeing the improvements that's been made. He works with Bridgehead, troubleshoots things that should not or should be on the bills from that standpoint. And so, and interesting enough, if you look at the, the line item there, I think just for current for December, I think it's like seventeen hundred. That's exactly where we should be. So I think over the year, we've had to get our arms around it for an IT standpoint. But what we're being billed at this month around seventeen is on average the twelve months that makes up the, you know, forty-five, fifty thousand of what we have in the departments. And then last year's amendment, you know, we were, we were over as well in some line items, fuel, city engineers. We also were over, I think considerably and across the board in utilities. I like to say we got a handle on a lot of those. We're gonna come in under city engineer fees. I think we're gonna come in under fuel, and then utility is gonna remain steady. One thing I can say is about fuel is I'm very happy that Ms. Davis finalized everything, but we are now with the state that I've been wanting to get on last couple of years, ever since Laura was here. So we're on the states, what essentially is the buy board. So it's going to be at a discounted, essentially cheaper cost to us to get fuel across the board in the apartments. So we should see that decrease over time. Hold on there, pretty quick. Fiscal year changes. Again, we're made tremendous strides by doing a nine-month budget, and then we're gonna go back to that. All right. I won't touch it. So fiscal year changes, you know, the idea is that once we get to an October 1st, we're gonna have a more accurate, timely reconciliation of revenue expenditures. And I'm talking like, you know, essentially, we'll know from a quarter to a quarter of where we're at on those. And why I say back to basics is because I've talked to Ms. Davis, we'll be talking to the department and saying, we're gonna get back to those basics to where we're essentially monitoring a little more carefully each month, each quarter. But once we're on that October calendar, we're gonna get sort of a more real-time perspective mainly due to revenue because we're, you know, not capturing ad valorem behind on sales tax. So we'll get an accurate revenue versus expenditures down the road from that standpoint. And then, of course, audit will be completed by the auditors through this fiscal year. They'll determine if there's a surplus for FY 23. I want to thank Ms. Davis for doing all the work and Ms. Wallace for doing all the work. I'm just here to, you know, do the presentation. So but anyways, they, they spent a lot of time on this budget amendment. So council, do you have any questions? I know it's kind of overwhelming and looks like we're, you know, have spent and we're sort of in a greater expenditure type, but we'll have a realistic and we think we're estimating that we're on the positive side once revenues are sort of caught up from that standpoint. Yes, sir. Mr. Joyce.
Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Rappley. I appreciate that very much and Ms. Davis and company for all that hard work. I think we're fortunate, of course, that we're on the revenue side. We're gonna be higher than what we are on the expenditure side by a hundred and fifty thousand or so. That three hundred thousand that we're over is, it's That three hundred thousand that we're over is, um, it's roughly four percent of the budget. Which is, you know, our budget's eight million bucks now, so it's not, you know, it's not all that, all that big a deal. But I, I just wonder, three hundred thousand's a lot of money. I just wonder if, if you guys might think about and perhaps recommend some, um, some triggers or something. Uh, so at some point, we know that we're, we're going down a route that's beyond what the budget has allowed.
Yeah, I think councilman, um, a- as you see in the column there that gives you the percentage, you know, there, I think again, it's going back to that sort of budget analyst mode, that monthly knowing exactly, okay, hey, we have twenty-three percent of the budget left. That far column tells you where we're at or how much less we have to spend. Um, so I think it's an idea of getting, um, and starting on that really early during the process, you know, and again, I've talked to Ms. Davis about this and, um, you know, she's, um, working on trying to, um, excel in other areas of the finance for reconciliation with Ms. Wallace, but, um, I think obviously the department uh, and myself, you know, are accountable for those things to make sure we're monitoring more often, uh, from that standpoint.
Is that feasible, given the, you know, staff commitments and such?
No, it's feasible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
And, and, and Councilman Joyce, just, that's why the one slide there I highlighted, when you talk about, you know, fifty-six thousand in the I T and the overtime and maintenance, I mean, you're talking uh, give or take, my math is right, you know, probably a hundred ninety thousand. You know, a hundred ninety thousand minus the three forty, that's kind of where we were at last year, um, from that standpoint. So I just wanted to highlight those three major areas. So.
Explanation was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Rappley, I think it would be helpful going forward if we were to look back at this budget versus last year and make sure that, um, we're being realistic with some of the budgets that we're making, you know, specifically fuel. I think we all know that it's, it's gonna be expensive, so, uh, just to make sure that the budget that we're producing is realistic and it's not unrealistic expectations on our side.
Well, again, I, I think that's why we'll be able to look back and compare to years prior. Once we get like a full year under this state fuel, uh, program. Uh, the reason why I want to do it, because I saw it was consistent in other cities I had worked in, that it was a real savings to cities who even had a larger departments who fuel line item was a big cost to those departments. And so I, I saw real savings, um, and you know, again, Ms. Davis outfitted it, got everybody their cards already, uh, so they are utilizing them now. Uh, we had Fuel Man, I felt was costing us a lot more and I'm, uh, happy to say that we are, uh, no longer utilizing their services.
Sounds good. Council, any further, Mr. Joyce?
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we approve ordinance number two, two oh two three dash twelve dash twelve, approving a budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second? Mr. Smith? Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Kurt, thank you, council.
Thank y'all.
And council, if you will, I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit. I know we have some guests and there's no need to, to make them stay with us all night. Um, we'll move up to item six point six, update presentation and possible action from the Parks and Projects Committee.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, as you all know, we've completed our comprehensive plan. And now comes the time for implementation. So the rubber is meeting the road and Parks and Projects has been, uh, assigned the steward of the plan and so the group has tried to put some thoughts together based on the C P A C recommendations in terms of priorities. And, uh, Dr. Vic Sylvia, one of our commission members is here to present to us what those priorities might be.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Um, as Mr. Joyce said, I'm here to, uh, represent the Parks and Projects Committee and, uh, we have, uh, we're stewards of the comprehensive plan. We've, uh, uh, reviewed and discussed the priorities in the plan. And, uh, we hereby recommend to the city council, uh, to adopt and begin execution of some of the, uh, of, of the priorities that are listed, uh, in this, uh, summary. What we've done is gone through the plan and, uh, categorized them as uh, tactical priorities versus strategic priorities. And the tactical priorities being, uh, the ones that are no cost or minimal cost. Uh, those that are already underway and, uh, one in particular I'm gonna point out is, uh, uh, we're targeting it for urgency, uh, because, uh, uh, we feel it needs to happen soon. So in those tactical priorities that you see there, under no cost. And I'm not gonna read every one of these because you have them in front of you, but I wanted to, um, as I was going through my, through this, I, I, uh, I can get through them in about seven minutes, so if that's okay, uh, uh, reducing the, uh, cut-through driving, particularly in the edge and terrace neighborhoods would be one, um, uh, reevaluating the daytime parking zones, particularly near uh, Lee High School, reevaluating the, uh, citywide speed limit. Continue advocating for via and via trans. Uh, working with, uh, 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 Northeast Independent School District to develop an artists and schools program. Uh, we, we work with our arts, art committee to do that. I should undertake a beautification program. And, uh, just to keep our resident residences and businesses, uh, in good-looking order. And there's an opportunity for the, uh, students and scouts to volunteer time to help with that. Uh, work with the zoning commission, uh, zoning recommendations, in particular for, um, tax-exempt and the media antenna properties. Uh, consider a free energy audit from CPS Energy, as well as an irrigation assessment from SAWS. And, uh, uh, in en- encourage the use of native plants, wildflowers and developing a wildlife habitat. Again, um, whenever possible, eliminate single-use plastics from city purchases. And, uh, uh, encourage our residents, our citizens to, uh, do things like composting to help reduce solid waste. Uh, explore dark sky initiatives, won't go into that at this time, but, um, that's a longer discussion. Uh, we, uh, but also, it's, it's fairly imperative to, um, i- i- initiate agreements with CPS Energy and SAWS, uh, to keep our energy, uh, keep our critical, uh, circuits, uh, enter and wells pressurized and the circuits energized the, for possible electrical, um, outages like we had a couple of years ago in the blizzard and then also during the summer. Um, so uh, then there's, uh, some items on, uh, drainage, the drainage channel, uh, the, uh, uh, the one from, from City Hall to, uh, Olmwood Creek. And also the, the drainage between Manton and, uh, Lockhead, Lockhill Selma to Antonian. Obviously clip those, to keep those clear from obstructions. Uh, finally, uh, uh, also consider our own Arbor Day and, uh, doing, uh, things to help mitigation plans for the oak wilt and, uh, you know, e- establish, uh, a policy to maybe for the planting of disease-resistant trees. Then the, uh, topic of certifications for the city came up. And, uh, there's some examples there, they're listed there. There's a, uh, a, a small cost for applying, but, uh, that certification would be good for future fundraising opportunities. Then for the priorities that are already underway, I wanted to thank city manager and the city council for the work that's been done in the commons. The, uh, playground, as you know, is completed. Our children are, are enjoying that. Our children and their parents uh, are enjoying that very much and we're happy about the, the work that's underway in the commons for shade structures. Uh, the stage and the restroom facility. Then, uh, considering the plan for the, the concrete drainage channel, uh, from East Castle Lane to West Avenue. Um, there's considerable discussion about the creation of a linear park that would go from Lockhill Selma, uh, to Antonian and under Loop Four Ten to that drainage area behind the H E B. And, uh, that linear park would be, in our view, a great addition, uh, for the city. Um, lastly, in the, in the, in this category is, uh, continuing your study of placing the solar panels. Uh, uh, either at the, at fire station or, um, you know, behind the city hall. The priority that has urgency, we feel is, um, a need for more security on Jackson Keller area. So we asked that you work with the police department, the Castle Hills and San Antonio Police Department for increased patrols and, uh, possibly improved lighting, security cameras. And, uh, if, if possible, a comprehensive analysis for urban renewal in the Jackson Keller area. So those are the, sort of the low, low-hanging fruit that will require sweat equity more than large amounts of funds. Then the, the, uh, Parks Commission identified, uh, three strategic priorities out of the eleven priorities that you can pull out of the, uh, comprehensive plan. And the priority one is economic development. So work with the Economic Development Council to, um, bring more high-end businesses to Castle Hills, make it a destination for fine dining. We already have uh, a, a few, uh, good restaurants, but we're, uh, be great to, to increase that. Uh, and in this redevelopment, of course, you have to consider um, incentives for the landowners and parking. So uh, we have to ensure that there's sufficient parking for the commercial uses and, uh, be great to have a parking facility adjacent to Northwest Military. Uh, then the, the second of the strategic priorities is branding. Uh, the Castle Hills logo, that come up with a new logo and signage at the c- city entrances and, uh, highway entrances. And then the third and last is, uh, simply, we request that the city manager be authorized to solicit bids for the creation of additional green spaces identified in the plan, uh, on pages five point two to five point eight. So, I know it sounds like a lot, but we've picked those three main strategic priorities, um, and the, uh, Parks Commission. Our intent is to review progress and, uh, on these items that then, at the appropriate time, we will, uh, recommend more. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sylvia. Mr. Joyce?
And I, I have it, uh, uh, Bernard Yettermeyer is the chair of the Parks Commission. And, uh, I have a signed copy that I need to give.
Okay, thanks so much, Rick. Appreciate that very much. Um, I just might point out to y'all that this drawing that Mr. Rafferty left with us represents probably about the ninety percent plan for the commons. Um, the stage is properly shown there at the top of the plan. The shade structures aren't quite right. That's why I say ninety percent. They're kind of oriented the wrong way. Uh, but everything else is pretty close. There, the hatched items are, um, pedestals for sculptures. And, uh, so anyway, that's, that's pretty close to being final, and that's what Vic was talking about. So what I would like to do now is to try to make motions to get these things going. Um, y'all are gonna hate me because it's about eight of them. Because they're all a little, a little different. You know, and I reviewed this with, uh, Mr. Rappley this afternoon and he was on board with it, so so bear with me and, Ms. Craig, I have it written for you, so don't worry about taking amazing notes. Okay, so here we go. With respect to the no-cost priorities, I move that we direct the city manager to undertake these items, delegating to staff or referring to Castle Hills boards or commissions as appropriate. Do I hear a second?
I'm, I'm a second for discussion, I'm assuming? Okay.
Y'all need a little more explanation of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think if you could just outline them, Mr. Joyce, uh, just to make sure that everybody's clear what we're voting on.
Okay. That first item then is what we're calling the no-cost priorities, which are on page one, two, and three of that, uh, document. It's part of the package. Uh, it lists items A through R. A being the implementation of strategies for the cut-through that Dr. Sylvia mentioned. All the way through R, which is the certifications, uh, based on our, our knowledge of and love of trees. That's what we love about Castle Hills is the tree. So we, if we can get ourselves certified as a, uh, Texas Tree City or Grain City or something like that, one of those certifications, that would be a nice feather in our cap. So these, and there's, there's a whole run of them that are, um, more sustainable, sustainability-type things. And they can be done at no cost, the energy audit, for example, the irrigation assessment, those kinds of things. Uh, looking at maybe eliminating plastic where possible. Um, those kind of things. A lot of that, a lot of those, that long list is sustainable-type things that don't cost anything. So is that helpful?
I don't have a copy of that one.
It was in the package.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I was a little lost.
Are we discussing?
Uh, I think we are. Go ahead, Ms. Ms. Haley.
I think it's a very exciting time and a very ambitious list. I gotta say though, realistically, I would think that we might want to focus on the safety priorities and maybe prioritize some of this. It's, it, there's a lot on it. And the reality of getting it done, by whom and getting, it's, it's gonna take a while. And I would maybe think we look at taking this in pieces and not try to load it up all in one. Oh, do this now because we've got a lot of other things going on as well. And I, I applaud all of this and, and support it, but I, I think we need to make sure we're realistic about what, what really we can do and a timeline for that and do a little more thinking about it maybe. And I'll add, you know, when we start talking about the edge and the terrace and other neighborhoods, ninety percent of the people don't have any idea what you're talking about. You know, if you haven't read the comprehensive plan, we, we've tried to name these communities. We've got some work to do on that too. People don't understand it. We've got to make sure people are gonna wanna buy into all of this. That it's really a good thing to do. And we're start, we've, you've lived in it, Jack, you know, with the Parks and, Parks and Projects has lived in it, Com Plan people have lived in it. And I think to, to say we're gonna do this and here's the community and here we go, I, I, we might wanna think about taking some of the, I'm all for the, the cut-throughs and there are a lot of things. I'm, I'm for it. I'm just thinking, let's, let's make sure we're gonna, it's gonna be successful, really successful. I don't, I don't know what your expectation is. You know, the, what I'm reading is, okay, go do it. You know, let's go do it. And I, I'm all for it, but everybody's doing other things too. And, and I've heard from people, we start talking about the city telling people what they're going to do. And I've had feedback from a few people going, I, I don't know how, how well that'll go over. I'm just being honest with you and I'll stop talking.
But, uh, and Ms. Ms. Danes, go ahead.
Um, so I, I think all of these, um, all of the listed items, A through R are all great and I don't really see anything that I have an issue with. Um, but as, uh, Councilwoman Haley mentioned, I am curious exactly what it is that we're voting. exactly what it is that we're voting for and who we're putting in charge of doing what. I don't mind, you know, I don't mind pitching in and helping out on discussing strategies for reducing cut-throughs. I mean, but otherwise, who's discussing the strategies and who's implementing the strategies? I do think that, that there's a lot of, that some of this is a little bit vague. Continue to support and advocate for V N via trans. Does that mean a member of the staff meets with VIA or does somebody with a parks and projects meet with VIA? Anyway, I, I think that all of these are admirable ideas and I'm behind them and I want to be, you know, helpful in, as a resident and a councilperson, so I'm willing to put forth some of my time as well. I just wanna understand exactly what we're voting, like how this is gonna get done.
What Ms. Danes said, I'm just saying, that's a.
Mr. Smith, you have anything? So I, Mr. Joyce and Dr. Silva, I guess my comments would be that and, and seeing these and hearing them, there's a lot of great ideas, but city staff is pretty busy as it is. And so I, I hate to inundate them and throw a stack of ten things and say, hey, go get it done. I'd think that maybe bite-sized approach of a little bit more direction and probably it's gonna require a little bit more hands-on from council and the committee and start addressing these individually so we can have individual successes instead of inundating staffs. I, I think that's what my colleagues are saying.
Yeah, that certainly sounds reasonable. I wonder, is there any one thing that y'all might be comfortable with moving ahead with this evening? For example, on page four, priority three A that Dr. Sylvia mentioned, we, you know, the Jackson Keller area is, has always been troublesome. And unfortunately lately, it's become more troublesome than it has been. And so it's, it's simply a suggestion, and of course, it would be organized by, by Mr. Rappley, but to bring chief together and maybe some security consultants and purity, security people in the community and just come up with some ideas to, to better the security in that area. It's basically forming an ad hoc committee. Maybe meet once or twice and make some suggestions for security ideas.
I'm, I don't wanna speak for the council, but I'm personally not a fan of over-committing things. You know, I think to the extent that we're not making actions as a city, Mr. Rappley is within his right to go sit down with Chief Zuniga. They can go meet with the chief police for any ISD and have a conversation. I don't wanna feel like we're over-bureaucrating things, so to speak. And, and if, Mr. Rappley, if I'm wrong, please chime in.
No, no, I mean, I, I discussed these with Mr. Joyce today and didn't have really any heartburn or feel that a lot of it was a problem to either delegate, organize, or essentially to get done. I mean, some of these areas I could work with the chief, work directly with the parks and projects on these things. You know, we're already underway to consider the daytime parking over there to, you know, reevaluate that because I think it's somewhat not necessary anymore. We're, we're close to bringing forward a recommendation to actually move the speed limit closer to twenty-five than thirty here soon. You know, we're always working intergovernmentally with, and, you know, both, you know, the mayor and I have great relationships with people from VIA, so you know, that's, that's sort of existing. You know, in ISD, we have a good relationship. I think that's something we can hone in with Mr. Joyce or someone from the parks to sort of foster that within ISD on the arts program. And then, you know, we're always doing beautification projects, it seems consistently. And then for zoning, you know, that's probably that one, talking to Mr. Schnon, how we might direct that to zoning to review that as well. Then eventually coming back to city council for that matter. And then, you know, I know that under, what is G? Is that a G or a Q? I'm sorry, the city should consider Arbor Day. That's something that actually Mr. May had brought up about us moving forward to identify us as the Texas Tree Program. So I know that Mr. May wants that on the agenda sooner than later. So I think these are all very feasible things to do or either underway. And if council wants to give direction to me to work with whatever group and or staff to come back to council to see where we're at on these things, I think that's great. The priority is already underway, as Mr. Joyce said, we, we, we've sort of got a plan for the Commons. And as we continue, which we come back to council because if it depended on funding, we'd bring that back to council for consideration anyways, from that standpoint. So. And then the design not complete on proposed concrete channel, that's, that's the Mimosa Cremaria project. So that's just re-engaging one of our new engineers, finishing up the design. We have the construction dollars and that from the twenty-three CO bonds. So essentially, that's already underway. I have a meeting here in the next couple of weeks with our new engineers and Saws on that project particularly. I think Mr. Joyce will be joining us to see if we can look at that linear park concept as part of finishing the design out one hundred percent. So I, I look at a lot of these things already sort of underway from that standpoint. I don't mind if council gives me direction as a result to do this, you know, we'll, we'll get it done either way. If we have problems, we'll come back to council. If it's funding, we come back to council.
Mr. Rappley, you know, maybe a, a variation of this Councilman Joyce would be to put this in your lap and have you provide updates just based on what you know already. So then we have a good understanding of where we're at. You know, I look at the CPS and Saws. I'm sure you all saw the news recently, this Saws just acquired generators for backup. So that's kind of already in place. We can have a conversation and see what the status is for our generators, but maybe not a formal process that requires council.
And one thing I told Mr. Joyce today, he wasn't on council, it was when you get down to the priority two and branding, I mean, we had discussion with a sorry, a creative, trying to remember the name, but they're here in Castle Hills. Yeah, so we had discussions years ago with them. They put together a, a package for branding Castle Hills. And it was denied by council at that time. They even, I think, gave us a little bit of a discount. So that's a matter of just re-engaging them to see how they could help us on the branding. Again, that would be coming back to council for any funding considerations as well.
Ms. Danes?
Well, thank you, Mr. Rappley, for that explanation. I'm, I'm glad that you are on board with all of this. That alleviates most of my reservations. Worrying, worrying that that was just putting too much on the city staff, but I agree with Mayor that it seems like you have a lot of this well already under control and we can just allow you to continue with these priorities and just give us updates on the progress that's being made.
Yeah, I mean, I, I attend the Parks and Projects Commission and been working directly with them on all these projects or and or, you know, the Parks and Projects, as Mr. Joyce would tell you, there's a stewards now of the Comp Plan. So in a sense, it's taken from that commission to work with me and staff on trying to get these projects done.
So, you know, I, I'm not blind to all the work that the county, the committee put into this. Maybe it's directing the city manager to provide an update on what's already here. That way we can know where we're at and we can provide some progress by the January meeting.
Will we not direct him to continue to move forward, Mayor?
Well, that's, I think maybe to assess the report as written and then provide updates on what's already in place. And then from there, we can decide what will require council action.
Fair enough.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Schnon?
There is a motion before the council. So that motion could be acted on or it could be tabled. I don't know who seconded it, but I thought I did hear a second.
Mr. Smith seconded.
Thank you. Okay. I don't know if Ms. Craig had that down either. But since there is an active motion, either that motion could be amended to reflect the, the discussion that amendment would then have to be voted on, or the motion could be tabled until Janu-, the January meeting, or there could be an up or down vote on it. But since you have an active motion, unless it's withdrawn, something needs to be done as to that motion.
I think I'll just withdraw the motion.
Okay. Mr. Smith, are you okay with that? Okay. Motion's withdrawn and I think we have some direction on how to proceed.
Do we need a motion for that or is your statement?
I, I think we're good. Mr. Mr. Rappley can read between the lines, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In other words, I'll continue to work with Mr. Joyce.
Thank you.
There you go. Can, can I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Nobody has worked harder on this, I know, than, than Mr. Joyce and the effort and the intelligence and the energy and the, what he has put into this and, and the Parks and Projects and the comprehensive plan. Don't, please don't misunderstand me. I think it's spectacular what all has happened. You know, I just think we do need to inform the community about all of that. We, we, we need to spend a little more time with what's going on. And I'm all for all of this prioritizing safety, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Okay, next up, update, presentation and discussion from the Economic Development Committee. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, the Economic Development Committee was formed some months ago. And they've been meeting, oh, three or four times, I'd say, and it's a terrific group. I'm very pleased with what's going on. And here to update it is the committee chair, Dr. Emily Calderon Galliano.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, Mayor, Council. It's on a PowerPoint, please. Is it working?
While, while we're, while I'm opening this, Dr. Calderon Galliano was a part of the Up partnership that brought a hundred and fourteen million dollar investment to the San Antonio area. So I think she's already doing a pretty good job with economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. We're really excited what that's gonna do for our community and our young people. Okay, so part of the Castle Hills Economic Development Committee Charter is that we provide an update. So this is the brief report of what we've been up to. As a reminder, these are the tasks that were listed under our charter. Essentially to develop an update of a proposed economic development, economic development plan that aligns with our Castle Hills Comprehensive Plan. Identify potential resources and funding opportunities as well to support economic development initiatives. Recommend an ongoing marketing campaign, which you also heard from our Parks Committee folks to support, again, economic development. Continue to develop our relationships with Castle Hills businesses. Recommend a business recruitment strategy and then, of course, track progress and reports to you all. So wanted to make sure that this was a forced, first and foremost, because this is what has guided our work so far from our first meeting in October. This is a list of our members. So thank you so much. These folks have been, we've been meeting since October. We have a committed group of folks and, you know, appreciate Mr. Russ as our vice chair, Mr. Keith, who is also here, has helped with a bunch of, with lots of our work. So thank you, Council, really for, for this great group of folks. We're, who's committed to Castle Hills. Okay, so far, like I said, we've been meeting since October of twenty twenty-three. Our meetings are typically on the second Friday of the month from eight thirty to ten. We've been having them here in the Castle Hills Community Room. Open for anyone. And, and so we've been pretty good about sticking to that time to make sure that we, you know, we've got a lot of work that we need to get through. Again, now, so our charter was that we can have these proposed goals for the economic, for economic development for the community. So with that, we've developed a proposed work timeline because we wanted to ensure that it's something that it really encompasses, not just what we are in, we are thinking about, but also what the community is also thinking and needing and would, would want for our community as well. One of the biggest things is as we're doing this work, we also wanted to ensure that it was based in some sort of research. And so again, kudos to our members of our community, committee, who have done the research and brought it back to us for us to discuss, looking at other economic development plans that are in place here in Bear County. And, and then also looking around the country for other, I think there's about twenty-five cities that have grown from anywhere from one thousand to six thousand over the last, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, and that are also landlocked. So again, so that we're looking at what others are doing and then, of course, leaning on, on information that's provided through TML as we're looking at all of this work. So the timeline that we have, we were, we've discussed within the committee, as you have it here, is six different phases. The first phase is to discuss proposed major goals, again, aligned with what was in the, the charter. Then, so I'll present those in a bit. The next is phase two, to have community town halls to provide us some feedback on that, provide what are maybe potential strategies and activities that can happen within each of those proposed goals. Phase three is information gathering and analysis. Again, this is going to be, they could be conversations. We are beyond the community town halls, speaking with each of you all, speaking with folks within that are on staff here with the city manager. Again, also appreciate Louis, who is able to, who comes to our meetings because he's a wealth of knowledge for us as we are moving this forward. Phase four would be to develop the recommendations that we would then be drafting a document and then finally updating and finalizing the document by May twenty twenty-five. The goal is again, thinking through of what is this, how can we move this forward? Also in alignment as we're thinking of Castle Hills turning seventy-five. And how do we make sure that we've got something big in time for that as well? So these are just things that, that are, have come into conversation and as, that have been in the guiding our conversation again throughout. So the proposed goals that, that we have, which also align with some of the work that was prevented by our, by our Parks Committee, is the create a strategic marketing plan. And then really looking at what are gonna be some of the internal needs for the city and then also external needs as we're talking about. Again, how do we bring in, because our goal is bringing in sales tax and businesses and information, right? And how do we, to, to, to our, to our little jewel of Castle Hills? The second would be to, to promote business attraction, retention and expansion. And so those are three very different things and it means different things depending on which are the businesses that we're working with. And so one of this is looking at industry targets, seeing how we can work with the existing businesses who are here. How can we can help them, help them expand? How can we help them when it comes to, I think, conversations that we've had even around getting like, again, with parks, how they mentioned getting VIA and that is something that can also help. And we're talking about how can that inform our work and getting workforce here? How can we attract businesses, especially in light of airport, airport expansion and where we are in, in proximity to that? So again, these are some of the things that we're looking at. And then finally, supporting local education and workforce development. Because that is how we are going to make sure that our businesses have the folks here who can staff them. And then again, this, if we get folks here, then they can also spend here. And then this is additional funding for, for the city. So these are the proposed goals that we have. Again, none of this is obviously set in stone. We wanna share this with the community and through our community town halls. And so the next thing is to, how do we engage community voice? Because again, that has to be how we move this work forward. As, as a committee, we discussed three potential workshops. Looking at different times when folks can join us, Saturday morning, Tuesday evening, right after work, or Wednesday evening, a little after work, maybe you're able to get some, some dinner prior to. And again, making sure that we can provide some sort of variety for folks to come and join us and then have a strategic have activities in there. Many of us have done, here are the different initiatives, let's vote, what are some dots? And again, how do we get different types of opinions and perspectives in place? We're hoping to have them in the Castle Hills Community Room, but again, we need to confirm that that is available. So this is where we are so far, considering we've met starting in October and wanted to make sure that we provided you a, an update on our work so far here in twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counsel, do we have any comments, questions for Dr. Calderon Galliano and Mr. Keith? Mr. Smith, yes, sir.
Thank you for your report, Dr. Calderon Galliano. I just wanted to just kind of make a comment about in these, and the town halls and in your work, well, in your work up till now and in the upcoming town halls, I'd just be very interested to hear what businesses here may think are barriers to operating here or make things difficult for them. I, I'm looking forward to hearing more information about that, about maybe what we can do to kind of I, I'm looking forward to hearing more information about that, about maybe what we can do to kind of help them develop and grow here.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Ms. Haley.
So we'll have a Castle Hills reporter gonna be asking for articles and being published in January. And I'm sure Mr. Joyce is miles ahead of me here on all of this, but this is the perfect venue to advertise that this is going on, and the more we can let, and, and that goes to everybody in the community. It's not just social media, it goes everywhere. So I hope that that's something that we make a big splash about, that this is happening, along with implementing the other, you know, I'm just, we have a, that's our venue to be able to do that, so let's take advantage of that as well. Sure you are.
Great, thank you, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. May?
I just had a quick comment. We have two seminal events that are possible for the Economic Development Team to consider. One would be the eclipse on April eighth, and the other is an Arbor Day celebration, which would dovetail into what Councilman Joyce is interested in, as well as, I think, most of us. So maybe your committee can consider specifics that we could get on top of fairly early, and then promote that and involve the businesses.
Thank you. It's a great suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. May. Any other comments, questions, Counsel? So I have two. When I first got on council, I had brought up the idea of economic incentives, and Mr. Schnall informed me that the city would not put out incentives, but rather accept offers from businesses that were interested in presenting incentives. Mr. Shaw, is that still right, or am I wrong?
I don't remember it that way.
Okay. All this to say, I think it's important that we put, pull out all the tools. And so if there are economic tools, like a tourist zone, or something that somebody would be interested in, and that is a carrot that you all can dangle for them to present to the city, I think the council would be interested in receiving offers that businesses might find interesting. I know the city of San Antonio doesn't have the bandwidth to entertain deals for small businesses, what, you know, small. They're focused on Toyota and Navistar and JCB, and so the business that San Antonio might not be as interested in, I think that we would be very interested in receiving offers. So I, I'd, I'd put that out there.
Thank you.
One more thing I'll add is the, our police and fire are really the difference, and so when you tell businesses that are closing down because of vandalism, because of theft, that we have two to three minute response time, that's really a big deal. One of the other things that I'll tie on to that is a, a new program that we're gonna be hopefully starting soon, that is gonna be handled administratively, but basically, we're gonna have affidavits on files for business owners, so that if there is somebody loitering around their property, they won't actually need a call if they've already registered that they are not, they do not want trespassing of their property. So a sticker that the Business Association can put out there and say, this business is on file, so when the officer shows up, they'll either see that or have a record that that business is already listed. And just another tool that we can offer businesses and give them peace of mind.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Daines?
So that sparked some thoughts, yes. So that and Mr. Smith's thoughts on what, what would, what are impediments to people come to businesses wanting to relocate here? I've heard in the past that, like, our signage codes have been confusing or maybe not implemented across the board the exact same way, and that's bothered some businesses. Well, or they've just struggled with getting the signage correct, things like that. And I just wonder if we could get that information from our existing businesses, or people who have left, for whatever reason, and those people are probably harder to reach. Then maybe we could make sure that that, that we get, if there's like, if there's something we can, the city council can do to, to help smooth out code compliance issues and things before people receive those, have those problems. I think that's something that the entire council would be on board to, to get behind. And then, yeah, I mean, I just, I agree that, that I think some of the things that were brought up in the parks thing about branding ourselves. I think marketing is a great idea. I mean, we know we're great, and I want everyone else to know how great we are. So, yeah, I appreciate, appreciate all of the work that's going into this. Thank you.
Thank you for the ideas. This is great, and really wanna also kudos to Mr. Joyce as how he's just been there moving us forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I talked to Mr. Schnall, and I think it's time we bring back the, you know, we obviously have to establish a toolbox here for those incentives. And I think it's a couple of years ago, we had presented some various type of incentives, even talking about the sales tax rebate, bringing that forward. I think council at the time sort of dismissed it, but I think it might be time to bring it back for review.
Yeah, maybe, I, that was what I recalled, was that we had a discussion and had made a presentation to the governing body. I can't remember exactly when, I wanna think it was early in twenty twenty-one. I might be off a little bit because COVID fuzzed everything up for everybody, but, but the, the proposals were to go ahead and adopt a policy for possible granting of partial tax abatements, and a policy to adopt partial tax, sales tax rebates for businesses. The TERZ idea is a great idea for some communities, but the standards that we would have to put on record about depressed conditions in our community, for the most part, are not attractive. And I need to do a little bit more looking to see about a couple of alternatives. I came across one just coincidentally last night, doing research for another client, which may offer an opportunity for an economic development incentive where the city partners with a business. It starts, though, with, with our committee, working to get businesses interested in coming to Castle Hills and letting those businesses know the city is open to ideas. And Mayor, I think that's where you were going, and I think that's exactly the direction that the committee seems to also be looking at. And it's a combination of getting someone who's interested in being here, and then finding in the toolbox that Mr. Rappley mentioned, finding the tools that would be the most effective to get them to actually come and provide jobs and people, and obviously retail sex, sales tax revenue to support the city as well. And I'm glad to work with the, with the committee, with Mr. Rappley, and obviously with the governing body on trying to present those ideas. But this last one I mentioned, the partnering with a, a private developer, not quite a, a public-private partnership, but, but simply creating incentives that match what the business is looking for.
Absolutely. And more than anything, I just want people to see the Castle Hills is open for business. Any further questions, comments? Okay, thank you all so much for being here with us, and I appreciate your service. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna digress a little bit back to item six point three, discussion of possible action on amending the council relations policy and code of ethics for city council. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you know, you, as a whole, as a council, adopted the council relations policy, code of ethics back in December of twenty twenty. Obviously, there's language in there about reviewing the document every year to make sure that things are on par, or if it needs to be updated accordingly to, you know, what the process and protocol is for city council. In the packet, you have a red line document based on what I received, I believe, from Mr. Smith, Ms. Haley, so far for review. I think tonight we might open for any other comments or suggestions for the documents. I know that in speaking to Mr. May, he has an idea about this particular gen item because he was involved with a previous council member to originate this document and bring it forward in December of twenty twenty. So that's what's in front of y'all for consideration tonight, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley, Mr. Schnall.
There are also in the red line some comments that I had on improving this document. Many of the ideas that I had were similar to or the same as some of the things in both Mr. Smith's and Councilman Haley's comments. I did see that there was some, there were some further comments. Mostly, clerical might not be the right word, but formatting and for consistency, which, for which I thank Councilwoman Haley for providing. I don't think this is ready for action tonight because we still are, I still need to work through the, the latest comments from Councilwoman Haley, which I didn't really get a chance to look at until late this afternoon. And as Mr. Rappley has indicated, Councilman May, I believe, has some comments on this issue as well.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Counsel? Mr. Smith? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. May. I'm sorry, Mr. Smith is pointing to you on screen.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I'm the one that worked with former Councilman Gregory, and we did sit down in the back area and laid out the, you know, the process. We knew at the time there was gonna be a need for additions, changes, et cetera. In line with our thinking there and not create a quorum violation. My proposal would be that we have two council people, and only two council people, take the existing red line, go through it carefully, then resubmit it to our city attorney, and bring this back for either the January or February council meeting when it will be ready.
I think that's a great idea, Mr. May. It sounds like a motion.
So be it.
Do we have a second?
Do we need to designate the?
Second by Ms. Haley. Mr. May, do you have any ideas on, on committee members?
Well, Ms. Haley had indicated an interest and willingness to work. I'm willing to defer to any other member of council, but I'm also more than happy to serve.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
I'd be happy to, to volunteer for this.
Okay, so Ms. Haley and Mr. Smith? And we have Mr. May's motion already on record, all in favor? Second, Ms. Haley's second.
Wait, Mayor, that, is that still, that's not, can it involve Mr. May? So, correct?
No, Ms. Haley and Mr. Smith.
Okay, okay.
Perfect, thank you. That was unanimous. Thank, thank you, Counsel.
And we have fulfilled what we said we were gonna do to review this in December, whether we get it finalized or not. So I'm satisfied with that, that we've actually taken the steps to get this done.
Perfect. Next up, we have discussion, possible action ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash twelve dash A, amending section forty-four dash one seventy-six of Article Six of Chapter Forty-four, the Code of Ordinances Regarding Permits for Overnight Parking. Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, Counsel, this current ordinance obviously doesn't allow you to park overnight from two AM to five AM. So we had had some residents contact, you know, Chief Zuniga, contact administration about some of the concerns and issues with this. I think between Mr. Zamiron and Chief Zuniga and myself, coming up with some language here and getting with Mr. Schnall to review and bless the modified changes, which would allow sort of a holiday period for residents who have visitors for the holidays, I believe, between Thanksgiving and New Year's Eve, Chief. That would allow a tagged sort of permit for parking during those times. So they have to, have to register with police department, so we know exactly whose vehicles they are parked in front of the house. And again, this would sort of be a holiday, would alleviate some residents who have children from college visiting who need to park in the street, those kind of things. So I think it's a good compromise between city staff and working with residents on this ordinance. I do know there's reasons why we have no parking during those times. I think that, you know, the police department has significant reasons, public safety concerns, those kind of things. And so I think this is a good sort of compromise for us to modify the ordinance and assist the residents during this period of time. Mr. Schnell?
What I wanted to do is that, wanted to make sure that the council knew exactly what the changes were, because you got a clean version of this document. All the changes are in subsection A, and in the first part of subsection A, on the fourth line, the, the statement now, the, the ordinance would read, if adopted, no such permit shall exceed seven days, and no more than two such permits may be issued for any premises during any calendar year by the chief of police. The current ordinance says no period permit shall exceed thirty days, and would allow no more than three permits per residence. So that is a change. And then the other change is the sentence beginning, in addition, and that's, those are the provisions about the holiday parking permit that Mr. Rappley was talking about. But I didn't want the council to, to go into this and to consider this without knowing that there were those two other minor changes, which I believe came from Chief Zuniga. But I would have to double check that with him, so I'm looking at it. Yeah, Mr. Chief Zuniga says those, those recommendations about changing thirty days to seven and three permits to two permits did come from the PD, and then this, this holiday parking permit, Mr. Rappley, I think, very well described.
Thank you, Ms. Schnell. I appreciate Chief Zuniga and Louis' work on this, because I think it said, like I said, it's a good compromise to assist residents during this time period.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Ms. Daines?
Sorry. The issues that have been coming, that you've been receiving, are they issues that people need this parking? Or are they complaints that there are people parking overnight? And we, we have an ordinance that says they cannot do that.
Again, I think this is particular with people visiting, not permanent. The homeowners who live there permanently, who park in the street, who are not following the process. Again, this is, we're just talking about solely during a time period, you know what I mean? Any other time period you park in the street, you know, it'll be enforced and addressed by police department. I think this, again, just relieves a household who, you know, has family or, or children in college visiting from that standpoint. But no, and there's no way it stops from being enforced from two to five by the police department.
Ms. Haley?
So when people have their whole family coming in for somebody's funeral, and it's not during between Thanksgiving and New Year's, I mean, you can still, should there be something here about case by case that this is all, I mean, it's always available. You can always make an arrangement to park in the street when you need to. I mean, this is kind of a, I don't know if that needs to be somehow said in here, I just, it kind of like it's limited to that, and I think it needs to be clear that it, it can happen anytime if you need it.
Correct. I mean, that's part of the current ordinance, and, and with this amendment, it would mean that the people coming in for a funeral, or perhaps better yet, for a birthday, it would only be a seven-day permit max, not a thirty-day permanent. The first sentences, the first two sentences are still in there to allow parking in the, in the circumstance you described.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Just a couple of questions. Are we, will this be included on the fee schedule, or will this just be on a case-by-case basis and without a fee?
No, there'll be no fees associated with it. It's similar to, like, we've done with the, the parking concerns, like, over by Lee with the Canadian, we've given sort of guest passes during the day to accommodate anyone visiting those residents. It's, it has the same spirit here.
Okay, and the other, really, my second point is more of just a statement. We might wanna consider, anytime we have, the, the way the ordinance is written, only the chief of police can grant one of these. Maybe we should add, or their designate, or something along those lines, on, on the off chance that Chief Zuniga or the following chief of police is out of town.
Yeah, Mr. Schnell, I mean, I think from a pure enforcement purposes, it's the police department, but do we wanna add a designate, like, Public Works Director or something along those lines?
I think we should add the words, or does it designate where a company is located?
Yeah, and there's also a point, first sentence of subsection C.
Okay.
Not the city manager.
Mr. May, you had a comment?
Well, I was going to make the motion, which I think I can. I moved that the city council adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash twelve dash A with the insertion that has been discussed, allowing a designated alternative to the chief of police.
Thank you, Mr. May. Second by Ms. Daines. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a discussion possible action on resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash twelve banning smoking in the commons of the city of Castle Hills during a city sponsored event or city co-sponsored event. Many of y'all were with us for the lighting of the lights and there was somebody that was smoking a cigar. I am not opposed to cigars, but given the circumstances, it was it was troublesome because it was offending people and children were there. And I think that this is a very reasonable ordinance that if we're going to have something that's family friendly, people should not allow to be smoking there. If somebody is going to rent the commons, if that's allowed or having a private event and they're not bothering anybody, I think that they're within their right. But at a minimum, I think that this helps us protect our tiniest residences, residents. So I'll entertain comments, questions or motions. Ms. Haley?
I move that we we adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three twelve twelve banning smoking in the commons of the city of Castle Hills during a city sponsored event or a city co-sponsored event.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Daines. Any discussion? Ms. Daines?
I mean, yes, I was at the lighting of the lights and I definitely heard lots of commentary on that, not just by parents with small kids, but I mean, just kind of everybody, the the people who were volunteering at the decorating stations were right in the line of, you know, wind flow and they had to stand there and and deal with that for, you know, extended periods of time. And I I agree that it's just not necessarily a a good idea to allow that during these big festivals. My only question would be, will we put up signage that does make and how, I mean, how's probably, doesn't have to be answered right this moment, but I would like to see signage go up so that it isn't somebody's responsibility to go tap somebody on the shoulder and ask them to put their cigarette out.
And I think signage is definitely a possibility at a minimum. Having the ordinance, you know, we typically have some kind of a police presence during co-sponsored events. And now they can point to an ordinance and say it actually is illegal. But I think with regards to signage, we can leave that in Mr. Rapley's purview. Mr. Harada, oh, Mr. May, I'm sorry.
That, Mr. Mayor and counsel, I I noticed that this is couched as a resolution. And isn't there a big difference in enforceability on a resolution versus ordinance?
Mr. Schnall is going to come up to the podium and opine, Mr. May.
Not really. I mean, we still have, we still can deal with this, but you know, the the code of ordinance does say that violations are punishable in accordance with the section of the ordinance. So an ordinance may be a better approach to take on this. I would recommend the council adopt this tonight if that's its inclination. And we can bring this back in the form of an ordinance at the next meeting. We can't do an ordinance tonight because the the agenda said resolution. But be fine to just bring this back in January. And in the event, there is an event in the next couple of weeks, having this on the books will still allow the police to remind people that it is still a violation of a city rule, whether it's an ordinance or a resolution, and hopefully we'll get voluntary voluntary compliance. We can do an ordinance in January that puts the possibility of a fine of up to two hundred or five hundred dollars in the books as an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell.
Great catch, Mr. May.
Speaking of signs, it'd be pretty easy to just even do some, like a yard sign, something you could pick up when the event was over, just put them up and take them down. Something nicely done, like a yard of the month sign, like the garden club sign, something nice. But they go around in certain places and they're not sitting there all the time where people have to look at them. They're only, it's only good when they're, when you're there.
Are you looking at me because I bought the yard of the month sign?
No, no, but I was thinking of something pretty, but anyway. And that that is, I'll I'll give that to Mr. Rapley, but that would be what I would think. It'd be easy to do, very easy to do.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Okay, counsel, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much. Okay, we're getting close here. Next up, we have discussion possible action on a change order request for the street improvement project phase three, Mr. Rapley.
Mayor, counsel, this is as part of the street improvement progress projects. Last month you did a change order. This is change order number two. It involves three items that total twenty-one thousand one ninety-three. There was an abandoned drainage structure that had to be removed on Peg Sue. A thick concrete foundation on Roletto Drive. I think it was an old utility pole. And then one of the things I I wanted to wait till we had the contractor was since the neighborhood wasn't utilizing the the Lundblade, I guess, the the gate and access and all that to remove it at this time. So there was a cost for removing that as well, but all three total the twenty-one thousand one ninety-three. And your agenda packet is a breakdown of each one of those. Let's see. Which was about sixty-four hundred on the removal of the median and and the island at Lundblade. And then the seventy-eight hundred to remove the concrete foundation. And then the Roletto, what they're calling telephone pole line adjustment was fifty-two hundred. Obviously, these were unforeseen things in the project and required a change order at this time. Still within budget, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve the change order request, the second change order request for the street improvement project phase three.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. With a second, Mr. Joyce? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Okay, next up with deliberation regarding employment evaluation and duties of the city manager Ryan Rapley, possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five five one dot zero seven four Personnel Matters. Counsel, I I put this up on there. I forgot to have my name next to it. I apologize. But you may have recalled that we haven't addressed Mr. Rapley's salary in quite a while. And his priority was making sure that staff could get what they needed and deserved when going through the budgeting process. And so I I want to make sure that we haven't forgotten about that. And now that the budget's in a little bit more solid position, I wanted to make sure that we could address his salary specifically because he has not received any colas either. I think he has some information for us and I think it's important that we take care of Mr. Rapley. Specifically because he's the head of the organization and the continuity has paid dividends as we look at the progress the city of Castle Hills has made with streets and drainage and playground and the retirement, I think we can all agree the city of Castle Hills has done a lot better in the short time that Mr. Rapley's been here. So I would implore you to consider a reasonable adjustment to his salary so that we can commend him for his service and recognize him and make sure that we're taking care of him. Mr. Rapley, would you like to go into executive session?
Oh, yes, Mayor. I've provided a folder there for you for review to bring forward an executive session. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, pursuant to section five five dot zero seven four Personnel Matters, we will break into executive session. Today is Tuesday, December twelve, twenty twenty-three and eight oh nine PM.
And section five five one point zero seven four of the government code.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That too. I thought I said that. Sorry. Did I say it? Oh, I didn't say it. Sorry, Mr. Schnell. Y'all are taking off, right?
Well, if Brian touches it, it might be off. That's on. It's on. It's live. It's recorded. No. No. Yeah, it looks. Yeah, it looks...
...
Take a little nap while we were gone.
Yeah, well, uh, yeah. They had to take a pause and they didn't have a public.
Maybe just put her head down.
Was that from the kitty box? The one that's in the kitty box?
Mm.
Okay, we are back from executive session at eight fifty-three P M with no actions taken. Uh, let me help Mr. May get this camera going. And we will proceed to item, uh, six point ten. Discussion and possible action on amending. The contract with the city manager. Oh, excuse me.
Mayor, I have a motion.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Danes.
I move that the employment agreement between the city of Castle Hills and Ryan Rappleye be amended to provide for a six percent annual salary increase. Year over year effective January first, twenty twenty-four and to provide. An additional two hundred dollars a month for car allowance for the term of the agreement to be extended to end on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Um, upon successful annual evaluations.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. We have a second.
All second.
Second, Mr. Joyce. And so just to confirm, that's a three-year extension?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Haley?
Do you not think we need to say, uh, for five hundred dollars if we're gonna, if we're redoing this, that we don't say we additional two hundred dollars car allowance, but?
Addition to.
Who know, I know, but, but if we're starting doing a thing, we should just say car allowance five hundred dollars and leave it at that, don't you think?
I think so. It's good.
What does Mr. Snoll think of that? But anyway.
Mr. Snoll has more detail.
I think it requires an amendment to Ms. Dane's motion, which has already been seconded. So why don't we let it ride? And city staff will understand that that means effective January one that car allowance goes to five hundred. If this is adopted.
Well, can't, could Ms. Danes amend her motion to say five hundred and we vote on that? Can we just do that and do it here clean?
Ms. Danes? If you'd like to do that, that's fine.
Okay, I would like to amend my, uh, proposed motion. Um, to extend the employment agreement between the city of Castle Hills and Ryan Rappleye. Um, to provide a six percent annual salary increase year over year. Um, as well as, as a five hundred dollar a month car allowance. Um, of, upon successful evaluation, annual evaluations, uh, effective January first, twenty twenty-four. To provide for the term of the agreement will be extended for three years to end on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
So that replaces your prior motion?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Joyce, is that acceptable to you, the withdrawal of the prior motion? Okay, is there a second to Ms. Dane's revised motion?
Second.
Second, Ms. Haley? Okay, any discussion? Uh, I just want to add, give some color to this, uh, substantial change. Uh, this is not a decision the city council takes lightly. I think that the. Extraordinary success that we've had as an organization and as a community to include. Continued supreme services. Uh. Substantial increases to our streets and drainage. Uh, is largely due to the continuity of the leadership, specifically Mr. Rappleye. We want to reward that and. Uh, also bring, bring to light the fact that he has not received any cost of living adjustments in the past three years. So. Uh. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Rappleye.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Okay, next up, we have announcements. I'm mayor and council members and items of community interest. Mr. Smith?
Um, first of all, I'd like to congratulate, uh, city manager rapidly. He's been doing a fantastic job. And I'm happy that we'll be, we were extending his contract for another three years. Um, secondly, I'd just like to say really quickly. Um. Whatever you choose to celebrate this holiday season, I hope we have a happy, a happy and healthy holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Haley?
I'd like to remember three people that I know in the city that have recently passed away. And commend them and, and. Their contributions that they made to the community. Manuel Salazar. Lived on Antler Drive and he passed away in September and he's spent his life loving his family and helping people in various parts of the community. Edgar Fischel. He, you might know him. He built birdhouses. He, his, his skill was in building. Birdhouses and he loved them and he loved to share them with people and he brought. His version of beauty and, and, and care to the community. And he passed away on October sixteenth and then Sharon Paulette. Passed away. I'm not exactly sure of the day. It was around Thanksgiving. And if you drive down Lock Hill Selma and look at Briar Cliff, the house on Briar Cliff at two sixteen and look at her garden. That she designed her landscaping and, and she was a can-do. Say yes to whatever she was asked to do person in the city and she was a champion for Castle Hills and I just. Uh, treasure them and I know that there are people all over this community like them that. Are still here bringing their beauty and order and help to the community and. Speaking of community at the lighting of the lights, the other night I. Saw a woman that I've met a few times and. She said, she has three little kids and she said. You know, when we moved here, I knew I was gonna move into a neighborhood. But I didn't know we were gonna have a community. And I just thought, boy, th- this is exactly what we hope for in the city of Castle Hills and all these pieces working together. It's a very exciting time. To be living here and I'm so grateful for all of you. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, whatever you celebrate. I'm with Jason. But we can celebrate our lives and all that we have and all the blessings that we have.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. May?
Just wanted to wish everyone happy holidays. Uh, I will be in town most of that period. If there's anyone out there that needs, uh, whatever they need, uh, assistance, um. If there's anyone out there that needs, uh, whatever they need, uh, assistance, um, maybe it's the first Christmas or New Year's on their own. I'm gonna be available, so give me a call. I'm listed.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Well, I, I'd like to dovetail Ms. Haley's comments about the tree lighting. Boy, that was a tremendous event. Uh, so much community spirit and community participation. Uh, I've never seen that commons filled up with so many people. So it was a tremendous thing. Kudos to the community organization and staff and all of those that helped out. It was, it was tremendous. Secondly, thank you to Mr. Rappley, who has been, uh, a real friend to me and an aide in getting all of this crazy stuff done that I've been working on in the last few years. And we would not be who we are now. We wouldn't even know what a C I P was if it wasn't for Ryan Rappley. So thank you, Ryan, and congratulations. We hope you decide to sign that contract we've offered you. Um, and then finally, happy holidays all. Have a wonderful time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Danes?
Um, yes, I just want to wish everybody a, a happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Uh, we did have a wonderful celebration for the lighting of the lights. Um, I agree with Mr. Joyce. I'm pretty sure I've never seen that many people in the commons before and I was just overwhelmed with happiness at how our community is coming together and how much, um, how hard everybody's working to really make this more than just a neighborhood. Um, I'm very, very pleased about that and I just wish everyone the best.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. I just want to take a quick moment to thank city staff for putting together, uh, the lighting of the lights. That was a lot of people, that I think the most people I'd ever seen. And so I know that wasn't, uh, an easy thing to accomplish, so thank you for making it successful and thank our county commissioner, Grant Moody, who came by too. Uh, he, he was a big champion in us getting the million dollars to adjust the drainage on Carrollwood. And I just want to thank Mr. Rappley again for his service. Uh, City of Castle Hills has gone through a lot. Uh, and I think Mr. Rappley is probably the longest-serving city manager that we've had in twenty years. And that's not, uh, an exaggeration, so I, I, I think that, uh, we showed our appreciation tonight and I look forward to moving on. Uh, one small note, I had a resident come up and tell me that they had an issue with their alley and I've seen that a lot more recently and it, it was disheartening to hear that we have more stuff to fix. But it was great to hear that it wasn't streets and drainage. And, um, I'm grateful because it's, the team up here and your leadership as council members that have made that possible. So thank you so much and here's to another successful year in twenty twenty-four. I will entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. Do we have a second, Mr. Smith? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much. Everybody have a good evening. Meeting is adjourned at nine oh three P M, Mr. Chanel.